Thank you for tuning in to Beyond the Dais, a podcast about the stories taking place in and around El Paso County, Colorado. I'm your host, Scott Anderson, and my guest today is the El Paso County Commissioner for District Three, Stan Vanderwerf. How are you doing today, Stan?
I'm doing great. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak here to the residents of El Paso County.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for taking the time to be here. I understand schedules are crazy for commissioners, so I appreciate you taking the time to be here. But before we get started, I want to quickly add that if listeners are interested in more stories about people doing good in and around El Paso County, or hearing from county leadership about local government priorities and how they operate, you can find additional episodes of this podcast on your podcast platform of choice. But to get started, Stan, I was wanting to have you give some of your background prior to being elected as a county commissioner.
Well, thank you very much. I grew up in a family where my father was a minister, and we actually traveled around quite a lot. I actually graduated from high school in New Jersey and decided to join the Air Force at that time. I went to Purdue University, got an industrial engineering degree, and then went into the Air Force and served for 28 years. And that helped to shape who I was. I just enjoyed serving so much that when I retired from the Air Force, I tooled around a little bit in developing companies, found out that I had a skill set in that and being an entrepreneur. But there was still something in my heart about serving, and that got me to a conversation with my friends about maybe running for office. And that was a fun conversation because part of it was, well, what should I run for? And, you know, what do I, you know, where would I fit well? How would my background work best in what position? And at that time, I did not know very much about what a county commissioner did. So I had to do that research. And when I finished that research, I found a really good link between my military background and what a county commissioner does. And we'll talk about that a little bit, but there's a lot of translation of skillsets for the kind of work that I did in the Air Force.
Yeah, so why don't we get into that now? How has that background in the military really helped you with this current role here as county commissioner?
So I was in the Air Force, not an operator, so I wasn't a pilot. I didn't fly an airplane for the Air Force. I ran pieces of the business side of the US Air Force. So I was running program offices. I was serving in combatant commands, which were big gigantic planning staffs. So a lot of the skillsets that translated over in the Air Force, I was dealing with very large public budgets, and in the county, we deal with large public budgets. In the Air Force, I was in leadership positions, including command positions. And in the county, I'm in a leadership position as one of the county commissioners. In the Air Force, I dealt with public policy extensively. It was a different type of public policy revolving around a Department of Defense budget and so forth. But as a county commissioner, I deal extensively with public policy. And I'd say the last key area was, once I was a commander in the Air Force, I had a lot of people looking at me, wondering, is he a good guy or not a good guy? So I lived in a little bit of a fishbowl, right? So you become a county commissioner, and you have the exact same thing. People are wondering, are you going to be good for the community or not? So all of these skills I picked up and got to practice in the Air Force, and they have translated well into becoming a county commissioner for El Paso County.
So you mentioned before, when you were talking with your friends about public office and thinking this is what I want to do, what really was that appeal of local government for you? And why did you decide this is where I want to start?
Well, I would say the desire to serve was the overriding consideration. And then, once establishing that, it was in what capacity would I like to serve? So I evaluated, for example, maybe running for federal office, maybe going back to serving in a federal government role as a civilian, maybe running for a statewide office. But when I looked at local government, I found the connection that local government has to its citizens. It's really an awesome place to work. Because in local government, you're really close to the people that live here. You live with the people that live here. You're seeing and feeling the same challenges and issues that other citizens have. So it becomes an opportunity to really make a difference at a local level. And I would say local government is the best form of government out there.
So I understand that you are a bit of a hiking enthusiast, and that may be underselling it a little bit. But how did you get involved in hiking? And what have been some of your favorite hikes that you've done?
Oh, my gosh. Well, I've been involved in hiking since I was in high school. I climbed Mount Washington, the highest mountain in the Appalachians, when I was in high school. Then I got involved in the Air Force, and I got really, really busy. But then I got stationed overseas. And someone came up to me and told me that they had climbed the Matterhorn. And I thought, oh, my gosh, that would be awesome. So I felt like I had to climb the Matterhorn, which is in Switzerland. So I went down there, hired a guide, climbed the Matterhorn, and it was just a fantastic experience. That gave me the climbing bug. So that was in the late 1980s. So then, when I got stationed here in Colorado, what a fantastic place if you want to climb mountains. So when I was at NORAD-NorthCom from 2006 to 2008, I committed myself to climbing all of the 14ers in Colorado. And I did all of them in a two-year period. But that actually got me more deeply interested in climbing. So I've just continued that now. And I have over 200 mountains that I've climbed in Colorado, and I now have a worldwide climbing resume. So I've climbed on almost every continent in the world. And some of the more notable mountains, Kilimanjaro, for example, Mount Fuji, the Matterhorn in Switzerland, and also Aconcagua in South America, which is the highest mountain outside of the Himalayas at almost 23,000 feet.
Oh, wow.
But probably the most notable is Denali. Denali is a very serious mountain. It's a mountain that can kill people. So that was a fantastic hike. Now, we did it in an expedition. It was 30 days long. We did it with a team of 12 people. 10 of us made it to the peak, and I was one of those 10. And it was a fantastic experience.
So climbing like that, I think, takes a certain type of personality. I don't, maybe you could say that anyone can do it. Eh, I don't know. I don't know if I could do it or not. We'd have to see. But what about those type of climbs really resonates with your personality?
Oh, I'd say, you know, in all of the years that I've had in public service, which is over 40 years now, sometimes I've been in program offices where the program itself might last for 20 or 30 years. So you go in and you steward that program as maybe the commander of that organization for two or three years, and you never really see the start, and you never really see the end. So one of the things that appeals to me about mountaineering is you know when you've made the achievement. That's when you get to the peak. Now, you're only half done. You've got to get down safely, right? So there's a lot of really interesting challenges in mountaineering. It's not only about achieving something, it's about doing it safely so you're always come back home. So there's a lot of interesting, different dynamics. And I just love the planning of it. I just love the preparation of mountaineering, and then I love the achievement of mountaineering. And maybe one last thing, and it might actually be the most important consideration for me, is when I climb and I'm out in nature, it feels to me like that's God's cathedral. I get this connection to the planet, you know, just to, just to the beauty of it. And it's just magnificent. So I just so much enjoy being out there and enjoying that.
Yeah, that sounds wonderful. So getting back to more your role as a county commissioner, can you talk about some of the responsibilities you have in that specific office?
I think it's very, very interesting because counties are the oldest form of government in the United States. And so some of the things that we do as county commissioners have a lot of lineage back to the history of counties. So as a county commissioner, I am a legislator because we do local land use policy, for example. But I'm also an executive because we're the board that has ultimate control over the budgets and other aspects of the county. And I'm also a judge because when we have violations of land use code or depending on the statute, violations of other things like a medical marijuana facility, we actually sit as judges and deliberate over guilt and innocence and punishment. So one of the interesting things that we do as county commissioners is we play a role in the traditionally three different parts of government, all wrapped up in a single board. I think that's an interesting observation about county commissioners, and that comes to some of the lineage of where counties came from.
So as opposed to someone like a mayor or a governor or a president who is essentially like the singular figurehead of a municipality, here in El Paso County, you're one of five commissioners. Can you talk about that dynamic and how you think that is better in some ways? And then perhaps maybe some of the drawbacks that come with that?
Well, certainly, the better side of it is you've got five people thinking through policy. So it's a lot easier to make a mistake in policy if you're making the mistake by yourself. I always consider it to be essential that before you really decide to go forward with something that could have an impact either in a positive or negative way with people, you want to talk to a lot of people. And I will tell you, the best ideas come from people you talk to. And I just love this idea of being able to take a bunch of different ideas from different people and kind of combining them together and morphing that into a thoughtful policy. For me, that's really awesome. So coming back to the board, it's important. I think it's very, very healthy to have several people deliberating over a particular policy. Now, what comes on the other side of that is the challenges of having multiple people engaged in policy. Now, the great news is that for every board that I've been on as a county commissioner, we've always figured out a way to work together, to interact with each other. Sometimes those are very direct conversations. But in the end, we reach a conclusion, and there's a lot of input and a lot of components of different ideas that end up getting placed into that recommendation. And you can see that when we're on the dais, considering a land use issue, where all of the commissioners will bring different ideas, and that sometimes shapes where we end up in the final decision. But that's really essential. And, you know, to some, they might call that sausage making a little bit. But on the other side of the coin, with all of those inputs coming from all the different commissioners, you, I think you get to a more thoughtful output.
Yeah, and I think this is not just a message about local government, but a message I think that could be useful in pretty much anywhere you go. Being able to respect others' ideas, even if you have disagreements, you know, certainly, you know, not all the time is the vote 5-0, right? But being able to respect other people's ideas and opinions while disagreeing, like, how do you manage that for yourself on the board?
Well, I have to tell you, I think that that is essential. So I tell a lot of people, if you respect me in our meeting, I'm going to give you the same respect back. And I do that on purpose because I actually want people to be engaged in conversations in a respectful way. I call it statesmanship and diplomacy. I feel that you can have a set of principles, you can stand on them firmly, you can abide by those principles, and at the same time, be respectful, thoughtful, and polite to people that don't think the way you think. And I think that's critical. I can give you example after example of situations where I have told people, these are my principles, and I'm not going to violate them, but how can we now work together? Because you have some different views, and maybe there's something I can do to accommodate those views or figure out how to solve a problem that you believe you have. And, but you lose the ability to do that if you're yelling at each other. Because that causes people to draw back. So when you have that mutual respect for each other, and it has to go both ways. I think it's important. It has to go both ways. When you have that, you can really, I think, create great policy.
No, that's really good. I like that. So you mentioned before that you were the founder of multiple small businesses here in the region. Why, to you, is small, local business such an important element of the makeup of El Paso County?
Oh, well, small business is really the bedrock of any economy. Small business is how an individual can take a talent, piece of talent or an idea, and turn it into something that can produce goods or services that benefit other people. And this is all about a market. And the freer that market is, the better off we all are. And small businesses are the device that allows innovation to help solve problems. And that, that device allows us to produce innovation. And so something that I like to say, you know, I'm involved in the arts community here and just a lot of community things. I like to say that creativity is essential, whether that comes from art or from study or from just thinking. Creativity is essential, and creativity produces innovation. And innovation is the engine of small business because small business is how you get innovation into the market most of the time. So there is a creativity part, there's an innovation part, and then the small business is the main engine that gets that creativity into goods and services that we all benefit from. So small business is essential.
Yeah. So one of the core values here at El Paso County is transparency, something that comes up in government a lot recently, I feel like. So why is that idea of transparency so valuable to the work of our elected officials?
I think transparency is essential, and that can be expressed in a variety of different ways, this concept of transparency. A lot of it is, you know, making sure we have a website and that we have public engagement in our board meetings to make sure that people can see our deliberations or see what kind of policies we have. But it's more than just that. We also want citizens to be engaged in it. We want them to feel like they're not going to get their head bit off if they actually engage in the county to help us build better policy. So we have, for example, in the county, 50 boards that help the county make decisions. For example, the El Paso County Parks Advisory Board. So this is comprised of citizens who have an interest in parks, and they meet and then provide guidance and advice to our Parks Department. And they often have other ideas, and this comes back to that concept of creativity, right? Having the public engagement in what the county does helps the county to be creative. And one of the great things about El Paso County is its creativity. There's amazing cool stuff going on in El Paso County, and we could talk for hours about some of those things, but there really, really are. And part of that is openness, transparency, engagement with citizens. Now, as a county commissioner, as an elected official, I have perhaps a little bit more of a set of duties in that regard because I have citizens that voted for me, and they voted for me because they want me to help the county run well. So I feel as an elected official, I have an obligation to go a little bit further as far as my engagement in the community, so I can listen to what people have to say about, you know, is the county doing a good job? Is the county doing a bad job? Or I've got an idea? Could you figure out how to put that idea to use? So I do a lot of community engagement, and that comes to probably 30 events a month. It's a pretty extensive number.
Yeah.
Yeah. So a lot of my evenings are filled being in, you know, a public policy conversation about affordable housing or maybe going to an awards banquet to, you know, celebrate the achievements of citizens in the community or getting involved in a policy conversation on things like public safety, you know, where sometimes the topics are pretty difficult. But also just making sure that citizens know what's going on in the community. I can share with them my perspectives on what the county is doing, and they can share with me what they think is important to them or, you know, how could we improve it? So that engagement is critical. And for me, that's a piece of the transparency of the county as well. The elected officials being engaged in the community.
Yeah. And one of the things that I think is really nice about living here in El Paso County is how diverse the population is, both not just in who they are, but how they think and what they want and the things they're looking for. And as someone who has been in, in the public eye, been working in government for quite a while yourself, do you ever find yourself in a situation or conversation where someone brings something up, and you may not know the answer to the question, you may not know the best way to proceed? And like, how is having people around you in this, in this community really help you navigate those areas where, you know, maybe you don't have the best answer, but you might have somewhere you want to go? But again, how does all those events you go to and listening to the residents really help guide your thinking to make what you think would be the best decision in those cases?
Well, I think that happens actually quite often where you get to a situation. I mean, there's, there's real challenges in any community, like in our community, public safety, you might say, is always important to citizens. Having a healthy economy is another thing, maybe making sure that we have attainable or affordable housing. And these kinds of challenges never have a one, single answer kind of an approach. It's a process where you're always trying to improve. I find that interesting because my background is industrial engineering. So I actually have an expertise in operations research about trying to improve operational efficiencies of public agencies or some other type of operation. So sometimes, you know, citizens will ask me, you know, well, how come we can't solve this problem? How come we can't solve that problem? And I have to, you know, think about that and respond back to them. And sometimes there is no permanent answer to that challenge. It's really a process about incremental improvements. So sometimes I get asked a question, and I don't have an answer. But what I do, the best thing I do is, is talk to the citizen and tell them, you know, what has the county achieved so far in that regard, which maybe doesn't get us all the way to a good end state, but helps to minimize some of the problem. And also, maybe I have additional thinking, and I've been contemplating that as a, as a proposal for policy, and I'll share that with them. And then I ask them for feedback. And actually, maybe the most important thing is the feedback. Because time and time again, it was true in the Air Force. It's true as a county commissioner. The best ideas come from other people, and the only way to get those ideas is engagement.
Yeah. I really like that. Thank you. So you've served as county commissioner for nearly seven years at this point. Can you talk about some of the accomplishments that you're proud of so far, as well as things you'd like to see done prior to the end of your term?
Yeah, I think we've done really great work. When I first came on as a county commissioner nearly seven years ago, we had a series of different challenges. Many of those had come out of the recession of 2008, and we had not, in fact, really resolved all of those challenges. So we had, for example, in our Department of Public Works, we had a road repair fleet, graders and snowplows and things like that, that were all old, and they were breaking down a lot. So one of the achievements that I'm kind of proud of is, without raising taxes, we've been able to recapitalize about 200 of those vehicles. This allows the workforce to be more effective in their application of their labor to plowing roads or fixing roads. So the number of road miles that we're capable of repairing today is, is more than double what it was six years ago. Without having to raise taxes on the taxpayer, because we recapitalize the fleet, that means the vehicles don't break down. That means the drivers driving those trucks actually spend their time working on an issue instead of repairing a truck.
Yeah.
So that's one example. I'd say another example is there's a lot of things that are coming to us from the Denver Legislature. Some of it's unfunded mandates, and some of it's been trying to take local control from local government. And we've really stepped up to fight that battle, and it is well-known in Denver, the activities of El Paso County to, to work on that. What I find kind of interesting is in many of those issues, not all of them, but many of those issues are bipartisan. So if you've got commissioners in local government or city council members, whether they're a Democrat or a Republican or an independent, they don't like having an unfunded mandate sent to them. They've got to figure out how to provide the basic goods and services without having to have more stuff come down. And they also don't like losing their local control because, again, coming back to the original premise, local government is the best form of government. So in many of these cases, it's bipartisan opposition to that. And we've been able to harness that and make a bigger difference in Denver. So I'm very proud of us. I call it our stepping up campaign, and I'm very proud of us doing that. Another thing I'm really proud of is we've really stepped up in the county in community engagement in a huge way. We are perceived today as a good, reliable partner to the chamber, to the city, to the other municipalities there in El Paso County, to many citizen groups, and we engage with almost all of them. And we do that in a thoughtful way and a respectful way, and we come with good ideas. And so we are really, really having an impact. The employees of El Paso County are fantastic people. They care deeply about our citizens. They want to engage. The commissioners are encouraging it. We've created an environment that allows them to engage in the community. And we're doing so much more of that today than we were seven years ago. So I'm really, really proud of that. It's the, that engagement part. Now, I could provide a ton of other examples because I have quite a lot. Maybe I'll just finish with one. When the decision to move Space Command was made, I asked the other fellow, my fellow commissioners and the county staff, would you guys be willing to plus up our lobbyist contract in DC and us play a much more active and proactive role in getting that reversed? I got universal agreement to do that. So we played a huge role in, in a team effort, you know, with, with the city and with the chamber and all kinds of private industry that all really wanted to fight to, to keep Space Command here. We played a huge role and an active role, a partner role in, in all of that. And I personally went on the Hill and spoke to 30 senators and congressmen about the value of keeping Space Command here, which was a mission issue as well as a cost issue. So we've really stepped up in, in these kinds of places. And I've given you three or four examples, but I could give you 20 examples.
I don't doubt it. So you mentioned, like you said, a number of accomplishments that have taken place. What are some things that you think El Paso County residents should be paying close attention to in the coming months and years? Things that haven't been accomplished quite yet, but things that people need to keep an eye on?
Well, I, you know, I'd say some of the issues that I'm going to bring up here are definitely part of the community conversation. Public safety is always a critical one, really, in an economy that you're not sure if it's going to go into a recession or not, certainly not as good a shape as it was a few years ago. Cost sensitivity is a huge issue. So we have to be very careful about managing our money, and I think we're actually really good at that. We've got very low taxes in El Paso County, and we need to make sure that we don't inadvertently harm citizens financially by asking for more money, you know, to resolve problems. Now, we've got other challenges. Mental health is certainly a huge challenge, and we're doing a lot of work in the county, but the community's doing a lot of work trying to address mental health. And I'd say a key component to that is social connection. So, you know, just as American citizens, we spend an enormous amount of time on our smartphones, and we have tended to become more isolated from each other over time. We've got to figure out how to reverse that and interact with our neighbors. I mean, a lot of us don't even know who lives two houses down from our house. That's unfortunate, right? So what if the person two houses down from your house was an elderly person? And maybe every once in a while, they need a little help taking the garbage out. Maybe they need, you know, a ride to a doctor's office, but you don't even know.
Right.
Because you haven't been engaged. So one of the challenges that I think we have is helping the community get to a better understanding about helping ourselves. And this is actually a key issue for me. There's only so much government can do. The most important thing in my mind is enabling a community to identify its own problems and solve its own problems as a team together. Now, there is a role for government to play in that. But in many cases, in many situations, it should not be the primary role. So this is our nonprofit community and our philanthropists and concerned citizens that are willing to step up and actually try to make our community a better place. I love that when I see that. And, you know, our community here has 5,000 nonprofits solving different kinds of problems. It's why this community is successful, because of the private engagement that we have. So active, concerned citizens willing to step up and do something, that is a beautiful thing. So that is going to play a huge role in mental health. It's going to play a huge role in ensuring that we have public safety. And then the third one is probably attainable housing. So, you know, in El Paso County, we've done an enormous amount about approving developments, you know, throughout county jurisdiction. And when we do that, the developers still have to meet thousands of requirements, you know, about water and sewage and roads and schools and everything else. So they've got a ton of requirements to meet. But it's important, in my mind, that if they meet the requirements, that they should then be allowed to proceed with the development because a house is an essential thing for a family. So we've got a lot of work to do about trying to deal with the cost of housing in our community. I think the number one most important thing there is supply, just providing more supply. We need to work in the mental health arena, and I think that's about social connection. And then we need to work always, right, in public safety because if you don't live in a safe neighborhood, you just, you have, you worry all day long and all night long about, you know, are your kids going to be safe? Can they go, come home from school by themselves or not? So having a safe neighborhood is essential. And there's a ton of things that we can do in that arena as well. But I can tell you, the El Paso County Commissioners have fully funded the sheriff's office every single year that I've been in the office. single year that I've been in the office.
Excellent. That's great. So I think we've covered a lot of ground here today, and I appreciate you taking the time again. But I wanted to leave, if there's anything else you want to add, maybe we haven't had a chance to talk about yet, what would you want listeners to know about?
Oh, I would say, one of the great things that I always like to share with, you know, with the community is get engaged, take care of your family, take care of yourself. If you're concerned, confused, worried, go find a friend, go find a nonprofit, find somebody that's going to help you out. Don't get stuck in a rut. And, you know, we've got the Pike's Peak Workforce Center. Sometimes the biggest problem is you don't have resources to solve your own problems because you don't have a job. Seek help. Go get help. Either go to the Workforce Center, find a friend that might know someone that needs an employee. There's a lot of jobs available in the community. Find a way to solve your own problems with your own resources and, and just stay engaged and just, you know, sometimes problems feel insurmountable. But never give up, never give up. Just work that problem a little bit every day, and two or five or 10 years later, you will find out that you've achieved that dream, whatever it is. So I'd say engagement. I ask the citizens to be engaged, interact with the county, interact with the city, help us, be thoughtful, public agencies, and we will respond in kind.
Great. Well, thank you, Commissioner Vanderweef. I appreciate you taking the time today and for all the work that you do here for El Paso County. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Great day.
If you're interested in listening to additional episodes of Beyond the Dais, you can find us on Podbean or wherever you get your podcasts. Thanks for listening, and we'll see you next time.